Energy and natural resources to provide for adequate light and/or acceptable noise levels and to avoid undue concentration of population, vehicular trafficking to prevent overcrowding and use some land and public facilities. Facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water supply, sewage disposal, schools, parks, and other public improvements. Provide adequate public notice of proposed changes to these regulations, zoning maps, and an opportunity here on such zoning matters. To establish and provide decision for borders on APLs to consider appeals, variances, commission uses as exceptions, and to implement the bonus policies and proposals of the comprehensive plan for the zoning jurisdiction. So staff does believe, after a general review of this, that it is intent and purpose of subject to regulations. Is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of plans? So page seventeen of the comprehensive plan is one list of goals. Encourage diversified commercial industrial development. It means promote economic stability, increase the local tax base, improve the local employment, opportunity for citizens of the community. Objective includes influence functional and efficient commercial development along the US 54 corridor. Page sixty, comprehensive plan shows the future land use map of this area as residential with the surrounding areas commercial. So they just assumed in the past that that lot was going to stay residential sort of in perpetuity. It was noted, obviously, that changed when K dot bought the land to the north because that opened it up for future commercial development. What's the nature of support or opposition to the request? So general support comes desire to increase the tax base for the city and diversify the land use composition. There hasn't really been any negative opposition voiced for this project. So the property owners, obviously, own houses, those are being compensated for their sale of land. Is there any information, are there any recommendations on this request available from professional persons or persons with related expertise which would be helpful in this evaluation? So no additional information that's sought out by staff regarding this matter. It's kind of cut and drawn. This particular case, you have a gas station on one side, they're proposing another gas station on the other side. Only residential lot is being sold by the property owners, and so it just seems like a continuation of commercial development. By comparison, does the relative gain to the public health safety or general welfare outweigh the loss in property values or hardship imposed upon applicant by not approving requests? Development is for commercial use. If the only close proximity is where the property is being demolished, I don't believe there's going to be any adverse effect upon property values. Blue square is where the proposal is. This is the Van Healy PUD to the south, which is being converted into the Bay City Center with commercial and residential development down here. This is out west, okay, this is an old area, so these trees are gone. This house has since been demolished. Demolishing this house opened up a high visibility area along 54, especially with a node of high concentration of annual daily traffic, which makes this area desirable for more development. Small cost for publication legally is approved as a form. It is recommended that you waive the reading of the ordinance and then approve the rezoning request for zone twenty-three dash two. Voice plus roll call.
You need some water?
There was a lot, dude.
Sure.
I want to know how your children handle you reading the time stories.
She went to sleep. Good night.
Make a motion that we waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
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 And make a motion to approve the rezoning request for case number zone twenty-three dash two.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish.
Yes.
Councilmember Leland.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
Ordinance number nine thirty-one.
Thank you very much. This is item H point four, rezoning for one zero zero one South Goddard Road, zone dash twenty-three dash three is the case number. Quick background, Garter Incorporated submitted a rezoning application on behalf of Bob Armstrong for JGB Properties. It's for track land located north of twenty-third South of Swanee Drive. Developer would like to rezone the land to General Business District C two for any potential business to lease the property. After review by the planning commission, final review be by the city council if approved to be reclassified as their days after publication to the newspaper. At this point, the city council will go through the carbon site out article thirteen, which should derive Kansas state law twelve there seven fifty-seven. There was a public hearing on the matter per state law regarding planning commission meeting, regular planning commission meeting on August fourteenth. Decision of planning commission was to approve the rezoning filed zero unanimously. Part of the reasoning the planning commission gave was desire to not see the building sit empty due to its exclusive zoning district it resided in and the difficulty repurposing a smaller church building to residential uses. So we just went through this and we'll go through it again. This is comes from section one hundred, H point one dash seventeen. Purple is my answer and black is the question to ask. What are existing uses in the character and condition of such property in the surrounding neighborhoods? So the subject property is considered, is currently general office building, one dash four stories, according to the county. It functioned as a church for a short time, as Baptist church. The land used to the east is farming ranchland, no improvements. Just to be clear on that too, we had a question about that. No improvements, it's a county classification, means there's no built structure, doesn't mean that the land itself is not an improvement upon society. To the south, the land use is vacant, but is intended to be developed into duplexes. To the west, the land use is single-family residential detached. To the north, is single-family residence detached. What is the current zoning of such a property in that surrounding neighborhood in relation to the request? So the land is currently zoned R two, two-family residential. To the east, the zoning is rural residential, county classification across the street, it's in the county. To the south, the zoning is R two, two-family residential. To the west, the zoning is R one, single-family residential. To the north, the zoning is R one, single-family residential. Is it likely that time that this subject property has remained in development vacant as a zone, a factor of consideration? So yes, definitely in this particular case. Social religious buildings tend to have an exemption to the residential neighborhoods, churches, schools, colleges. However, when these land uses leave, the buildings are difficult to repurpose because it's only an exclusivity that they reside within. So for example, if you can imagine the Cathedral of Notre Dame, for example, it's a very iconic structure. If it ceased to function as a church, what do you do with it? That's something that actually Mr. Joey Varan and Jordan Almo's had the same consideration when they bought the Baptist church also off of Second Street. You have a big building that is in a residential neighborhood, so the only thing you can really do is take that building, repurpose it into residential in a residential neighborhood, or you have to rezon it for commercial use. Those are your only two options. Sub cities choose, you just let them sit vacant for a while. I don't think that's economically a good strategy, but that's why we're going through the rezoning request today. With a request of correct error in applications, the regulations, so no, there's no correction. Question number four, basically what they're asking is, is there an existing business or type of use that's in a zoning classification that's not allowed? Are we correcting that or not? It's a church. It used to be a church in the way it functioned, that is, church in a zoning classification for residential. Is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area? Such property in itself is in nature significant such change or change in conditions? So yes, the land around that area was gifted to the city by the Grace Southern Baptist Church, which was sold to developer for the big arm development currently underway, which will become twenty-nine duplexes. The church building was separate and the developer is trying to repurpose it. So the church came apart as part of the sale. It was part of a separate, but in tandem with that property, and so, and he's trying to figure out what to do with it. Do adequate sewage, disposal, water supply, necessary public facilities, including street access exist, or can they be provided to certain uses that would be permitted on such property? So yes, sewer and water and street are already available. This is off of one ninety-ninth Goddard Road, just south of Swanee, right north of twenty-third. No, and the land was replatted during the plating of the big arm development. So if some property needed to be replatted or replatted, it was already replatted during the big arm development. Does screening plan be necessary for existing or potential uses on such property? So yes, screening is required since the property is abiding residential to south and west. And nine is single vacant land or building available and not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested. So as mentioned, our zoning, even though we have a lot of zoned land, there's not a lot of buildings that sit on that zoned land. So forty-two percent of it is actually built, another fifty-eight percent is actually vacant. If the requests for business or industrial uses are such uses, need to provide more services or employment opportunities? So commercial jobs could be created, but it's currently unknown because at this point we don't know really what they're going to be doing with it other than in the past, the two businesses that tried to move into before they were told that they can't because it's zoned residential, can't have a commercial business and residential allow for rezoning. It was a fence company for offices and a daycare, so it's a two-year trial. Is such a property suitable for use in the current zone to which it has been restricted? So no, R two does not allow for commercial uses. So what extent will the removal of the restrictions, i.e. approval of zoning request, entry into properties in the neighborhood? So possible, possible negative impacts on abiding residential without screening? High traffic flows could negatively impact residential values. Though it should be noted that if there's going to be high traffic flows, it's most likely going to be coming from the star lot, not for this particular lot. So if there's high traffic flows that are impacting values of residential properties, probably going to be properties that are actually docking onto one ninety-ninth, that actually bought one ninety-ninth, and the negative impact could probably be from the star lot, not necessarily this particular lot. So thirteen, I'm going to skip through most of this, this is just verbatim, you heard from before. So I am saying unknown. Previous possible tenants include the fence business. So for C two, general business, if it does make sense to rezon it for leasing the space, possibly, we just don't know what they're going to be leasing it for. If it is going to be a business that requires a lot of truck traffic, something of that nature, if there is already a parking lot there, we would definitely still require the screen regardless, so screening is going to be required. In terms of the general regulations under article one, generally speaking, it is in conformance with intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations, especially for repurposing vacant uses and to use existing infrastructure, which generally would be considered infill development if you were to introduce it. This is just repurposing an existing building. Is the request in conformance of the comprehensive plan does it further enhance the implementation of plans? So generally speaking, it does. It does encourage or assign commercial industrial development. The comprehensive plan shows the future land use map of this area as public or quasi-public and the surrounding areas residential. What is the nature of support or opposition to the request? So general support comes in the desire to increase the tax base for the city and diversify the land use composition. Originally, there was no negative opposition, but during the planning commission meeting, we did have some vocal opposition. They mentioned that there would be more, more cars on one ninety-ninth and that the fact that children tend to walk or bike on one ninety-ninth and that consideration for improving one ninety-ninth should be a factor for rezoning, and that was something that just came up. If, if in the long term, we're going to see a continuation of commercial businesses on one ninety-ninth and the traffic flow, then one ninety-ninth should be considered for modification, some of the comments that were voiced. Is there any information, are there any recommendations on this request available from professional persons or persons with related expertise which would be helpful in this evaluation? So I always usually speak to Jack Manning, he's a residential land analyst for central county. He said it is possible the high traffic could be detrimental to residential properties. Privacy effects should be required to mitigate negative impacts. Offices are generally acceptable with low noise and traffic. It would be business that requires regular truck use that could be considered an issue. So really, it's difficult to say, other than the fact that screening should definitely be encouraged. But as mentioned, if the concern is high traffic being detrimental to residential properties, it would be more of a star bond than anything else that would be negatively impacting houses on one ninety-ninth. By comparison, does the relative gain to the public health safety or general welfare outweigh loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon applicant by not approving the request? So if you don't approve the request, then require a building to be demolished to accommodate residential in the future, as the building could not be converted to residential. So either it's going to sit vacant, or you'd have to demolish it or try to convert it to residential, something to that nature. So that would be the hardship imposed upon applicant. So here's the property question. This is the big arm development. Blues, water lines, and green is sewer. Star bond is at the street, this is industrial district. This is the zoning classifications, this is R two, R one, R three. Gray is industrial. Financially, there's small cost for publication, legally is approved as a form. It is recommended the city council both one, waive the reading of the ordinance, and then two, approve the rezoning request for case number zone dash twenty-three dash three. With a voice plus a roll call and open questions and comments.
Make a motion to waive the reading.
We're still talking here.
I didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
I'm a motion by Aubrey and a second by Keaton to waive the reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm standing.
Aye.
So. What's your discussion?
Well, it's pointless. Well, it's pointless.
We can wait for the meeting to approve.
Okay. No, we were in jest saying that it should be the community's turn. I was just being a smart.
Oh.
Yeah. Keaton challenged me to throw up some trouble.
I mean, if I was the neighbor across the street, if I was the neighbor across the street.
To the north?
I moved across the street from a church. I didn't move across the street from a business, and that's a residential area.
Yeah.
So I'd be pretty pissed about it. So, you know.
But when you look at that picture, so these houses are, will you go back to the picture?
Yeah.
So the houses straight north of the proposed area are also basically straight west of the industrial park.
Yeah, but that entire area is residential. Why don't we just keep it residential?
I mean, but then are we going to want them to tear that down to build new houses there eventually? Or do we want it to just? Because the other thing is, we don't want just an empty lot for the next thirty years, you know? That's just going to look bad.
And it's been empty.
It's been empty for a long time. For a long time.
And we keep it a moat though, haven't we?
Yeah.
How big is that building?
I don't know. I don't know that it's.
It looks about the size of the houses next to it. Square of the room? Zone zero?
It's not covered, is it?
No, no, just what do you mean?
There's not like a zoning we could do that say we require it to be like offices versus like a single business or like a certain type of business, like with heavy truck use or, you know what I'm saying?
According to Zillow, it's four thousand two hundred and six square feet.
It's just pretty much one big open room. There's a couple other rooms there.
The only thing I can really think of is require restrictive covenant from the property owner. We don't, some cities like Wichita have a protective overlay that you pass in tandem with the rezoning so that it restricts the composition of it. So you approve the land use, but you restrict, you restrict its severity or intensity. We don't have that option, it's something we can consider in the future. That came up during the question about Goddard Trails and about duplex ratios, and we required a restrictive covenant instead. It's typical that instead require a restrictive covenant, we just do an overlay, protective overlay district instead, and run it in tandem with the rezoning.
Table if you have any other thoughts.
I mean, I know the people who live directly across from, I live right across from there. Yeah, I know that family. Actually, that family directly across is my neighbor's kids.
There you go.
Yeah, they live in my driveway from Wichita. Yeah, I mean, I think we should table and kind of get a feel from the people that it would affect the most. Because I, I don't think that the traffic is really what we have to be concerned about. You got the school right there, you got industrial, you got, you know, you've got so many other things. The traffic is not what we need to be worried about, but you're right.
What kind of business goes in there?
Yeah, if I moved in across from the church, I don't want a bunch of, I'm just being honest, I don't want a bunch of construction guys out there who put a holler in five a.m. You know?
Yeah. Like your rivers, this one, Wichita. I think we should table it to the next meeting. What do you think?
Motion by Brent to table? Is that what that was?
Yes, that's a motion to table to the next meeting.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, motion table.
There's a lot of possibilities ahead.
H five.
Marking thought he was escaping all of this. He's saying, just give him the rest of it.
Honorable Vice Mayor Council, this one should be relatively quick and easy. H five is for the purchase of a game for the public works yard. Get Friday access to a water plant. Land about in the public works yard is a mess. It drives it ground. It's barely, it's barely a gate, so it's in pretty bad shape. We solicited bids to replace the old swing gate with a new wider sliding gate. Best bid was submitted by Kansas Fence Company. The new gate will be thirty foot wide, sliding gate that is four foot wider opening. Cost of gate is sixty-eight hundred forty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Questions? It's a big deal. Okay, so anyway, cost of the gate in relation to sixty-eight hundred forty-one dollars eighty-three cents would be allocated a hundred percent to ninety-six, ninety-eight, eighty-one, thirty, versus capital agreement, public buildings, capital outlay. Questions about our gate?
Matt, do we have the money?
Last I checked, that was funded. Cash balance works over there.
So we can get remote control access?
We are not putting electric.
That's a big one that says Goddard other works.
People who want that shut, and they want it shut during the workday, and I'm opposed to that. I think it would shut during, during workday, these would be open.
Well, again, I'm not saying shut during workday.
I've had trucks, I've had people lobby for an electric gate. I'm, I'm for them, that's enough.
Yeah, no, I've got no issues with it. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a new sliding gate from Kansas Fence Company for the cost of six thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and eighty-three cents.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm counsel.
Honorable Vice Mayor and City Council, this is item H point six. So Travis Self has reached out to city staff to see if the city council would be in favor of partnering with him for design services to create a flag for the city of Goddard. Travis has worked with other cities in Kansas and elsewhere for designing or redesigning a municipal flag. The work he's proposing would be pro bono unless the council requests additional redesigns to their original design proposal. Flag designs are part of city branding and place making, which helps create a unique identity for a particular municipality or location. These practices help cities stand out, create civic pride and social cohesion, while helping to foster engagement place for those who are visiting the location. So the city council is deciding if they want to partner with Travis Self for, for design services for the creation of a flag. The first design is free. Additional redesigns would incur costs. Cities, Travis's assistant in redesigning or, designing or redesigning include Kingman, Dodge, Overland Park, Spring Hill, Garden of Kansas, and Yulbore West Wichita. So these are the designs for the flags that he's created. I believe number three, Kingman, Kansas, was adopted as finalist flag, and so does now the official flag of Kingman. Other flags were either second place, third place, in consideration. So financially, there'd be an additional cost for design revisions. The first design would be free. Legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended City Council, one, motion to approve the request by Travis Self for design services for a flag. Two, motion to deny request by Travis Self for design services for a flag. Three, table agenda item for a future date.
So if he does the first one, we don't like it, and we say aye, if we don't want to pay you, then?
Well, the first one, if you don't like it, it's free, so there's.
Right, but then we can always say, well, we don't want our redesign.
Yeah, you just say no at that point?
Maybe say no.
So the first question is, what is our brand? I mean.
Do we get input before the design?
Yeah, that's what I want to know. Do we get?
Yes, and so there would be design input. So we would reach out, the city staff would reach out to Travis Self, we'd put him in contact with city staff, and they would, he would reach out individually to get design ideas, and that would be the first design. So the first design would be him speaking to you or reaching out to you, and you would give him feedback. He would take your ideas, put it together into the first design. After that, if he felt like the first design wasn't effective or didn't represent the city effectively, then we'd start talking about redesigns.
Yeah, I mean, this is something, I've talked to a couple, Mike and I had talked about it a couple weeks ago. I think we need a flag, I think it'd be great, so having somebody willing to design one for free, might as well give it a shot. It would never hurt us.
My thoughts are, when we have our, 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 our citizens, let's have something to make a home with in that.
I would discourage against that idea, simply because the reason I would discourage against it generally speaking is that inevitably, the city council is going to have to select it anyway. At some point, you're going to have to take all the considerations of the city.
You can just have people vote on it, in a big little box.
I mean, I suppose you could if you wanted to go about it that way. I just inevitably.
Can't you put that box out for us? Fault vest.
Well, we're in a competition as citizens, like, you know, have a design competition, and then we can vote on the best design.
Yeah.
I mean, it comes with a citizen that lives here, and, and in the background, the idea of what are, what are we branding? What's our brand in the city? You know what I mean? What are we going to be known for? What are we known for? You know?
I think there's a big discussion of branding before you develop a flag.
Exactly.
I mean, Scott's, he's an artist back there, you know? Say we come up with a big slug, vote on the flag. We're also petition for a big blue ace flag.
It'd be red. That's great.
Oh, I just think that we had a competition within the city, and there's a ton of artists here.
I think his mentor idea is.
I've seen that art at the States, right? Have you seen that? I did a States art. I don't know. Matt, you missed it then.
Not a graffiti artist.
I think we should give him a chance. He's gonna, he's gonna.
I think it's, it's a free service that he's offering, why don't we give him a chance? And if we don't like it, then let me.
Then we do a competition.
There we go.
All right.
But I do think we need to figure out our brand and what we're looking for before he attempts anything. If that's okay with him.
Then you said he'll reach out to us.
Yeah, so if council's in favor, if you want a motion to approve the request by Travis Self for design services for a flag, Travis would reach out to city council members, or we would have them just send him an email saying that this is kind of what you think that the city would look like in terms of branding. And, you know, you're welcome to speak to citizens prior to sending that email out, which is kind of generally, you know, be, we are asking for you to design that flag, knowing that if the first design comes back wrong, we just deny it, either that, and say that we want to continue working with Travis for design purposes, because obviously, that would be for graphic design purposes. And then, so if the first design comes back and you don't, and you want to discontinue service of Travis, then it's no foul, thank you for trying. You know, as mentioned, if you wanted to.
Who designed our logo?
I'm not sure. Do we know who designed the logo for the city?
It was designed by the, uh, it is our, we're part of our park board for designing the pavilion and the, uh, master park.
It was that architectural firm?
Yeah. They, they gave us three options, the council, we, they gave us three options, the citizens voted on it over Facebook, I believe, and the council selected, uh, the highest proposal.
No, I mean, it was.
It was before my time. I wasn't here when that happened. I wasn't on council when that happened. Yeah.
It was sixteen.
Yeah.
It was more recent than I realized.
Yeah, it is.
So can we put a?
That, behind you, that's been there for maybe, I think they put it up after we did the remodel of City Hall, which would have been nineteen, I believe.
Nineteen, okay, yeah, so it's still fairly new.
Yeah.
All right. Who wants to give me one motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the request by Travis Self for design services for a flag.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. This is item H point seven. This is a joint workshop discussion. So, in the past, City Council has invited the planning commission to discuss items pertaining to growth and policy for the city of Goddard. On April third, twenty twenty-three, the City Council agreed to meet the planning commission during the regular planning commission meeting on June twelfth. Due to personal matters, the meeting was canceled. The question was put to the planning commission about a date to reschedule the meeting. Planning commission met on August fourteenth of twenty twenty-three and decided that October ninth, twenty twenty-three, would be a good time to have a joint meeting. That's that regular planning commission meeting. The committee development director mentioned the possibility to have a new city administrator by that time and felt it would be beneficial to have him present during the discussions. Planning commission agreed, stated that it felt it would be beneficial to have the meeting once or twice a year, discuss growth and development. They wanted it to be on October ninth, regardless if the city administrator was present or not. At this point, City Council will deliberate if October ninth at seven P M. It's suitable time to meet with the planning commission during the regular planning commission meeting, discuss growth and development.
They'll also have that meeting, even though it's Columbus, Virginia State?
Yeah, it will have off. Deliberation on a joint workshop meeting with the planning commission on October ninth, twenty twenty-three. Discussion items will include duplexes in general and duplex ratios in developments, general growth and development in overlay districts in Old Town for not performing laws. Financially and legally approved as a form, it is recommended City Council agree to revise meeting with the planning commission on October ninth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M.
Any discussion? I'll work for everybody.
Nine, nine a.m.
No, second C M, the ninth of seven.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Do we need a vote on that, or...
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion.
Make a motion to agree to revise meeting with the planning commission on October ninth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Very good. This is item H point eight. This is the Bridge River Maple Sewer Water Street Stormwater Low Bid Award. So, quick background, the Bridge River Maple Development is approved for the final platting January seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. After plating, we'll develop some additions for improvements through the special assessment process. These additions for improvements were approved by a resolution adopted on the first of twenty twenty-three. Notes were sold on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three for geo temp notes, series twenty twenty-three dash four, and all the costs associated with phase one bridge repair will be allocated to these temp notes. The improvements for sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer and streets were bid on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. On Tuesday at ten a.m., the low bidder was mace construction. The cost for mace construction will be paid through temporary notes twenty-three to three dash four. The engineers estimate for sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer and streets collectively were two point six million. Mace bid two million fifty thousand. City Council is now considering approving the low bid to mace construction for the installation of sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer and streets for the Bridge River Maple Development. The bid breakdown for total construction costs is as follows, with engineers estimate being in blue. Then you have no lock construction, non-linger, mace, and the collateral issue. Financially and legally approved as a form, it is recommended City Council award the low bid for the sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer and street improvements for the Bridge River Maple Development to mace construction.
I make a mo... I make a motion to approve the H eight recommendation and actions.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm going to come before you guys to ask for a vehicle purchase. Do you include the actual template of all the vehicles in this slide?
We've seen it before.
Yeah, well, miles. So, the government police department currently has two patrol vehicles, which are exceeding a hundred thousand miles, like, in the hundred and twelve, hundred and fifteen thousand range, and incurring mechanical issues because of their age, mileage, usage, and the heat that we had last year. Starting in twenty twenty-three, staff goes to the replacement plan of three patrol vehicles each year, maintain a healthy state of level. Fleet Police Department prefers to purchase Chevy Tamas for patrol officer use. We had purchased a few Ford Explorers, and they are, they're working fine. The Chevy Tamas have more space. They are a little bit better built, in my opinion, and I think they'll work out well. The purchase of a twenty twenty-three Tahoe, we have lined out, is forty-eight five. And more importantly, what we have the ability to purchase right now is a twenty twenty-three Dodge Ram Scent Cab Police Package Pickup. It's also available to purchase from TCS, Traffic Patrol Services, over here fitting, for a remarkable price, because of the time of the year. Pickup itself is only thirty-nine, one point five. You can just see the difference in price with what is available right now. That price for that pickup next year, the twenty-four version, is probably going to be eight thousand more, at least.
I like eight thousand more.
So, obviously, the pickup, all is considered. This staff is requesting the purchase of one new and outfitted twenty twenty-three Tahoe from Traffic Patrol Services for the regular police patrol usage, and one twenty twenty-three Dodge Ram Police Package Pickup for the patrol supervisor, which is our sergeant, in usage. Attached to this agenda item is a fleet spreadsheet to help understand the current inventory and replacement plan. So, forty-four and forty-five will purchase those of the Tamas purchased in June of twenty twenty-three to replace the aging vehicles, and they're still in the process of being outfitted. So, this purchase for the vehicle forty-six and forty-seven, that one allows to get rid of, forty-four and forty-five essentially are getting rid of a two thousand fourteen, sorry, two, yeah, two thousand fourteen Tahoe, a charger that's got a hundred and seventeen thousand miles on it, another charger. These are the V eight all-wheel drive chargers, so they tend to kind of become mechanical difficulties when we get up there in mileage. So, decent for some chargers, and two Tamas. One Tahoe, which I'm wanting to replace with this new Tahoe, was one that was wrecked years ago, and had a new frame built onto it, and it's kind of been taking a time bomb. So, the quoted cost for the fully outfitted, painted and graphed out Tahoe is sixty-seven. Quote down, or the cost for the fully outfitted and graphed Dodge Ram would be fifty-eight, five oh three. For both vehicles, totaling everything out, that amount would be one twenty-five, five oh three, coming from a reserve and some police budget. So, legal is approved as a form. And the recommendation for you guys to approve is the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Tahoe and a Dodge Ram for a cost not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand.
So, in June, we bought the vehicles that we were scheduled to buy in twenty-three, or the vehicles we were scheduled to buy in twenty-two?
Technically, twenty-two.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Because we only purchased one vehicle in twenty-two, and that was the Chevy pickup for Lieutenant Circle. That was a base civilian model. Could be just done some things to it. Works fine just for administrative purposes. Having the pickup, we kind of realize the, the usage of it is beneficial sometimes if you have a pickup, some large pieces of evidence, bike or something like that. It just facilitates that use, being able to use that vehicle from a sergeant's perspective, and they're not out constantly with patrol.
Because the schedule calls for two purchases, two vehicles every year, basically?
Up to twenty-three, but we'll, we'll need to get it into three, and this will lead us into three, and then, I wish I had a spreadsheet out there. And then, there'll be one year we'll have to place one, just because of where we stand. Hopefully, we don't need to grow much far right away, but...
Matt, you, did you have a comment?
I was going to say, we're playing catch-up for multiple years here.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's what's going on.
Just wanted to clarify.
We got, we, we transferred cash to equipment reserve because we knew that you didn't expect the year that it was released.
What happens to the replacement vehicle?
Previously, we've kind of been trying to build up other departments' fleet a little bit, so they were kind of thinking of those vehicles, but now we're going to be selling them. So, we'll get a little bit of income, kind of back end from them.
Have you found a replacement officer yet? For the officer?
I have, I have one opening right now. And I have, over the weeks that I've had, I've only been, I have one applicant I've worked on. Potentially another gentleman's awareness of, I think, the area who hardly would be leaving for family purposes to move closer to family, so I'll be down two, and still waiting on one more to come back from. And then, so, and then what we'll do with one of the vehicles the sergeant's driving right now, it's one of the Explorers, we'll just take that and we'll purpose it for patrol use. So, that will help get that vehicle in with the line. Questions, do you have any?
Oh, I just wish they all matched. So, they have so many different ones, you know? I gotta be able to see that sucker.
Every time we get, every time we get to where we almost have a uniform fleet, we end up with a new chief who has his own ideas about...
The punch is a threat right there. I'm not sure. And just make sure you buy, keep buying different ones, because you'll be safe.
I'll put some pink lights in there.
Two, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Aubrey, second by Brent. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries.
The next agenda item is a ballistic vest purchase approval. So, currently, we have, what I'm wearing right now, it's ready to three K, just how they turn it. So, it will protect against most pistol and lower caliber rounds. What, and obviously, we can't just wear high rifle protective gear all the time just because it would become some, just logistical. So, we have rifle plates that we can either put into the external areas that the officers wear, or, like, in my situation, I have a vest that has these rifle plates in it, that I would just put on over it, so my car, if I'm going into a situation where there could be potential for taking, needing extra protection. The rifle plates we have now, we've had them for many years. I've even got some used ones repurposed to us years ago. They've all expired. So, what I'm asking for is the purchase of these plates and to give every officer these plates, which will last fifteen years. Currently, we have, like I said earlier, we have ballistic plates for front and back for each member of the department. These plates will be ready to protect each officer from the rifle rounds that you see there. The current plates have expired as of a few months ago, and they need replaced by replacing the expired plates. Each officer will have front black and back ballistic protection for their vital organs, and should an incident arise with any extra protection. So, I'm requesting the purchase of thirty-two plates, which would give every officer a front and back plate, and I have two extras to allow for presumptive growth that I'm sure we'll have in the next fifteen years.
What do you do with the old plates?
I really, I mean, I, there might be a market for sending them somewhere that someone would appreciate an entirely place. Something I don't want to take on that liability of...
I think nothing matters.
I think we just need to go target them.
I mean, honestly, that, that could be used for a few rounds just to show...
Yeah, see if it works or not.
Actually, what's going to occur. They've been tested, so if we do that, I'll give you a call.
If market, if you listen, it's just a joke.
So, the quoted cost for this purchase is three hundred and fifteen per plate, including thirty-two plates totaling ten thousand eighty dollars, without the shipping cost. I don't know what the exact shipping cost is, so that's why I'm asking for just a little bit more to take that into consideration. So, this, this product comes from a shock stop, and it will come out of equipment reserve. Recommended, the City Council approved the purchase of thirty-two ballistic plates, not to exceed ten thousand five hundred.
So, my only question is on here. It says we'll come out of equipment reserve and some police vehicle budget. Why is that?
That was, that was, I believe it was, you re, you used the same slide, or the same form again, and we just did it.
I'm just double checking, making sure.
Hundred percent equipment reserve.
Okay. And we have the money in the equipment reserve, which is awesome.
And then, you catch up on, you said there's market maybe for the old ones?
I mean, maybe there would be. I, I haven't gotten that one yet, but you would not just throw them in the trash.
See who digs them out. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the thirty-two ballistic plates, not to exceed ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Alright, item H eleven.
Congratulations. Well, we started talking about this in, what, January, early February? It's been a process. We had a lot of really strong people who were, were interested in this position, but you all have picked your candidate. That is Craig Crossett, who is currently the city administrator up in Sterling. And over the past few days, we have worked with Craig and his attorney and come to an agreement on a contract. And so, we are here tonight to approve that contract and make it official once and for all. So, the general terms, I mean, you all are familiar with the agreement that we've been working off of in executive session. Just generally, Craig has to give, he, he's giving Sterling notice tonight at their City Council meeting. His existing agreement with them requires ninety days notice, so we're looking at November before Craig is potentially available to relocate to Goddard and get started down here. Obviously, if it works out and they release him from the ninety days, he can get started sooner. But at this point, it's looking like about November twentieth before he would be available to come down here. Pretty standard agreement. We were working off of a form agreement from the League of Kansas Municipalities. It is a four-year term, but there are provisions in there that it can be terminated by either side with notice, which is pretty typical. There is a severance provision in there, both for cause or without cause. That is pretty standard. It was in your last agreement. There is, the starting salary will be a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. For frame of reference, previously, you were paying a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, this is a little bit south of that. Otherwise, fairly typical stuff. Moving allowance up to five thousand dollars, and that's the sort of deal where he will present receipts for reimbursement. So, if at the end of the day, it costs twenty-five hundred bucks to move from Sterling down to Goddard, that will be the amount that gets reimbursed, but it'll be capped at no more than five thousand dollars. Obviously, moving is a process, takes a little bit of time, and so, there's a provision in the agreement that gives him up to one hundred and eighty days in order to formally relocate to Goddard. In the meantime, presumably, he's going to be doing some commuting, so... Do you all have any questions about the agreement?
Is that one hundred and eighty days from today when we approve it, or from when he starts?
The effective date will be his first date of employment, so whenever that starts.
So technically, he has to serve his ninety there, then it'd be two seven.
Right, and the whole, the whole idea of the one eighty that he requested was, you know, putting a house on the market right now and getting it sold, and more importantly, trying to find affordable housing is a bit of a chore at the moment, given the market. And so, he just wants to make sure there's adequate time in there for him to get everything in order and get relocated down here. Now, given that it's going to be ninety days before he can start, it may not take that full one hundred and eighty day period, so... And obviously, he's already signed the agreement, so I'm, I'm happy to answer any further questions that you all might have. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract and authorize the mayor, when he can, is available, to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
I make a motion to approve the contract and authorize the mayor. I second.
Motion by Brent, second by Aubrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Governor, any body comments?
Don't have a whole lot, as always. Thank you, guys, for those that showed up to Main Street Market. Had approximately seventy vendors on Main Street. So, it was hot, it was brutal, so people weren't hanging around, but we felt like we had a pretty good crowd. So, thank you to everybody who was a part of that. Super excited for the final Main Street Market of the year, September tenth. So, we will see you all out there, and looking forward to that. I did want to bring to, I, I think a couple of people were aware, it was brought to my attention our Facebook stream was not working tonight. So, could we maybe put a post out just saying, hey, we apologize for the technical difficulties? You know, just transparency, letting people know.
It looks like we were, when we tried to connect to Facebook, our Navo app wasn't able to identify the Facebook URL, so it's a technical issue that we have to reach out and figure out why that happened.
Perfect.
We weren't able to troubleshoot it internally, so we're going to have to try that.
Okay, yeah.
We'll put a Facebook post out to let people know we had technical difficulties, and we'll try to troubleshoot it more effectively before we stream again.
Awesome. Other than that, I'm super excited for the announcement of the new city administrator. We had some great candidates, but I feel like ultimately, we're making a good decision for the future of Goddard. Can't wait to get Craig and his family back to Goddard and, and keep moving Goddard's businesses and, and our community forward.
Thank you. Aubrey?
Yeah, second there. It's like, it's been a process about six months getting this city administrator along, but we're back on track. And I want to thank the staff for picking up the slack. You guys are phenomenal. So, thank you, guys, for, for stepping up and keeping everything flowing. But they will be happy with the decision in the future where we're headed with the new administrator. Other than that, thank you all for being here.
Brent?
Don't forget our next meeting. We're going to talk about this pop machine in the street.
Brent wants a line.
Don't forget to show up. That's all I got.
Yeah, come talk about the pop machines. We'll figure that out.
Alright, I got it.
You sure?
I'm sure. When have I ever held back? Alright, we have an executive session?
We have the, yeah, we have the button.
Um, well, the, the person that was supposed to be in the executive session, yeah, but he just peeled out, so other word.
I don't know if he got a call yet. Can you slip this over to me?
I know what it was about.
You can handle it? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to recess into executive session under KSA seventy-five, four, three, one, nine, to discuss personal matters and contract negotiations involving not elected personnel, to include the city attorney, city treasurer, and the police chief if possible. We will reconvene the open meeting in the city council chambers at 8:30 after a five-minute break.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think, I think we need to, I think we need to, like, entertain the idea that we're updating the hydro. And so.